Hello, everyone.
Patty, do we have enough commissioners here? I see four of us. Is that enough for a room?
We've got five of you there. One, two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see five. Okay.
Okay, but we've still got about a minute.
No, I know. I just want to make sure before I started, we had enough people.
Jenny Jesuit will not be able to attend today.
Yep. Jean won't. Jean won't be here yet. She'll let me know.
And Krista or Shayla may or may not be able to.
What about Commissioner Thielen?
I haven't heard anything from him yet.
Okay. Patty, remember to press record.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'm going to press record right now.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
That was cool.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is currently 3:30. So I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 Port Orford Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Commissioners, when you look at the agenda, it's, I don't want to say it's not a heavy agenda, but it's kind of not. I think one of our main focus today would be looking at public, listening to public comments, looking at the planning matters. And I believe we have to decide if we are going to accept what we talked about at the last meeting. So we're going to look at the comments in the code. And then if we do and we're happy with it, the next month will be the public hearing. Am I correct on that, Patty and Crystal?
Yes.
Okay. So does anybody have any additions to today's? Go ahead, Crystal.
We, we think so. We're supposed to do a 35-day notice, but we can't do the notice till we have the information. So I don't think we'll be able to do a 35-day notice, but we might be able to get an exception to that.
Okay, if not, maybe it's a comment, you know, that the commissioners, we can discuss maybe trying to move the meeting to that 35-day. Or if you guys are like, we don't want to, we could maybe talk about that. So we're not pushing it then into November. So do I have any additions to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve today's meeting agenda?
Can I ask? I guess I don't understand why we approve the agenda because we take what is required of us. And I've never seen a city do that before. So I just had a question about that from Shayla.
I don't know. I'm just reading what they handed to me.
I know, but I've been wondering it for several months.
Are we?
I don't why the approval, I don't know why the approval of agenda is on there.
Okay, so we'll take it off then. Perfect. I'm assuming that the commissioners, we have read the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 3rd, 2021?
Commissioner Byrne, I make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting in August.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Rossi, I second.
Do I have any discussion? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. Commissioner Thielen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Reinhold?
Yes.
Commissioner Schofield?
Yes.
Commissioner Neerat votes yes. Motion carried. Now it's to comments from the public. So if you would like to make a comment, if I can see you or if you want to just state your name and I will acknowledge you for your comment. Okay, I think we have no public comment. We have no public hearings. So now we're on to planning matters. So Crystal, it's your stage.
So if you will go to the staff report in your packet, we will get started. So you will note when we go through this that many of the decisions you made or all of the decisions you made, I hope, are in this staff report as proposed changes. But there's some things you haven't discussed. When going through the code with making certain changes, you have to make other things to be consistent. So I will point those out in the staff report. So on page one, the information that's going to be important and critical this time is Section 1740.040, the criteria and approval for a zone text and map amendments or map amendments. And you are doing zone text amendments. So we will come to that later because I make some recommendations at the end of the topic about the end of the report. Go to page two, please. And at the top, there was some concern about the word "public" and what that meant. And we thought that we needed it for certain requirements and things that we wanted to exempt for public use, but not for other uses, like the tsunami, tsunami exceptions that allow for tsunami gathering area that might be on stilts or something like that. So the wording "public" means open to and shared by the citizens of Port Orford for their use is one that I found that I thought should be appropriate. The rest on page two are mostly things that you have discussed that have to do specifically with heights. So let's go to page three. And at the top of page three is Battle Rock Mixed Use Zone 10 MU. And we had to, we have to modify the site plan review because it talks about exceeding 35 feet in height and that that would be part of site plan review. But we're not going to be allowing more than 35 feet in height from your discussion last month. So that exemption is shown with a line through it. In the general exceptions to height, building height limitations, 1720.050, there might be some things that you haven't seen entirely before, but I think you've discussed most of them. The one that I had to do some looking up was the last, it's in the second to the last line, says municipal and community water system towers approved by the city and the Oregon Health Authority. So I did do some research and the Oregon Health Authority is the approving body for such things. And of course, if that were going to the Oregon Health Authority, the city would have a say in that also. It would be for a new subdivision or something that the city themselves needed to do. Sorry, my voice is, sounds like Dr. Fauci. Section 1720 point, okay, we already did that. So at the bottom of page three, we have a change to tsunami evacuation structures. I put in the word "public" twice in that section. So we are beginning the recommendations at the bottom of page three. So my suggestion is that you make sure that the proposals agree with your intent. On the top of page four, you will notice that throughout the document, I've proposed changing the word "building" that is included within the building height descriptions to "structure" and leaving the word "building" as the heading for those things because we need to tie together both buildings and structures because they're kind of used interchangeably. And I thought that this might be a way to do it. So consequently, I give you the definition of "structure" in the code so that you can review that. Then you are required to make findings when you do a zone change. And I looked up some findings that are appropriate. Number one, and that this comes off the front page where it has the criteria. Number one, the amendments proposed within this document are zone text amendments, and they are justified due to changing circumstances within the development patterns of the city and also up and down the coast. And the proposed amendments do not conflict with any statewide planning goals. The proposed amendments do comply with specific Port Orford Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies. And number one, city policies two and three. Citizens did participate in this process, and that's a requirement of state law and also in our comp plan. And then B, statewide planning goal nine, economic development, says that we want to encourage human-scale amenities within commercial areas and adjacent to trails and lookouts to encourage tourism and enhance the city's sense of place. And I didn't put it in here, but this is also in our Looking to the Future vision document for the Battle Rock area, if somebody wants to add that. So you are expected to adopt or amend the findings to support your decisions. Add findings if you have some. And that is my staff report. Are there any questions?
Well, Crystal, I just have one. And I guess I'm going back to the public, that definition of the public. When we just discussed the definition of public, which I really do like, the definition, which means open to and shared by. Open to does not, doesn't necessarily mean open to with $5 fee to go. I mean, "public" means it's free of charge. Am I correct when I'm talking about that particular phrase?
I don't know because you have public water systems and public sewer systems, and they are not free of charge.
Okay.
They are available to everyone.
Okay, because I think one of the concerns we heard the last meeting was that there was a possibility or there had been talk about an observation tower that would be open to the public. And so that's why, I think we had talked about what that word "public" meant, but it was.
Yeah, I don't think it would be shared. I don't think it would be shared by the public if they don't own it in some way.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had that right in my head.
That's just what I was trying to, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Thielen.
Yes, I had a similar concern or question. So the word "shared by," would indicate ownership then?
Well, I mean, it could. That's up to you to decide if you have a better way. I couldn't find it in most model codes and things like that, but we wanted it. So I did find some definitions on the, just on the internet. And this is pretty much what one of them was, I believe. And I liked, I thought it was appropriate.
Then I guess what I want to have clear in my mind is that a private citizen couldn't get a permit for a public, a quote, "public" facility.
I don't.
And carry it out and then say, now this is a public place.
Well, I think you have to look at the definition and decide whether you think "shared by the citizens" would apply to something that's private.
Well, it would be, it wouldn't really be my decision. It would be perhaps the court's decision.
Correct. But we have a group of people here, and if they don't think it's strong enough, there might be something you want to add.
Well, one way to address that would be constructed by the citizens of Port Orford or initiated by the citizens of Port Orford. Initiated and constructed and shared by. I don't know if that's too specific.
Is your intent of this clause to make sure that the structures that are accepted, ones that are owned or operated by the city or county or state? I mean, is that the exception you're trying to create?
Well, unless there was, oh, unless there was some commute. I don't know if you're talking to me or to the.
No, I am trying to figure out what the intent of the word "public" is. What, what is it you want to be? What's an example of what you want to be public?
I understood that the word "public" was to be for observation towers and other things that were something initiated by the community and shared by the community and open to the community, but not, not something in private hands that wasn't, didn't go through the city's processes and things like that.
If I remember correctly, Commissioner Burnt, I thought it meant more, applied more to publicly owned versus privately owned. So that a private individual could not necessarily, would not be considered someone who could construct something and then turn it over to the public. Or is that what we're discussing? I thought that's what we were discussing last time.
I think publicly owned is excellent. I'm guessing it's underneath that.
So would you like, are you suggesting that we put publicly owned in there?
Well, is, so is the, so the definition in 1704030 definitions, the word "public," this is a new definition, is that right? So that definition did not exist. I mean, this is a proposed addition. So I guess in my mind, if the, where we were going to use the word "public," that we simply say publicly owned instead of defining "public." I mean, that would be, that would be an alternative.
Within publicly owned, this is Commissioner Neerat. Would publicly owned then automatically say that it is a publicly owned structure, either like Shayla said, by the city, the county, or the state?
Yes.
So it'd be kind of like a state park or a county park, kind of that idea? Is that kind of where we're going with that?
Yes, and I think the overall idea for me is that the public, that the city, you know, that the people have decided this is something we want. And instead of an individual saying, well, yes, this is what we want, and I'm going to build this, now it's going to be public. Whereas the decision to make it was not a public decision. It was a private decision.
So this, this is Shayla Key Black. Just in looking quickly at some definitions, it could be defined as any type of structure that is accessible to the public and is funded from public sources. Or it's a structure owned and operated or leased and occupied by the state, county, or city. You know, that type of idea, your traditional public structure. Generally funded by.
Okay, hold on real quick. We are having a lot of noise. I don't know who that noise is, where that noise is.
If you're not talking, mute yourself, please.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So Shayla, are, so pretty much what you're saying would just kind of be the same thing, the county, the city, or the state. So are we kind of, commissioners, are we looking towards that direction? We want to be able to put some of what Shayla said, that particular definition? Is that maybe what we want to define "public" as?
I would say so. That's what I, that's what, that's the direction I'm going in my mind.
I think it's fine to state it the way it is, but just add another sentence that includes what Shayla said, that it's funded by public sources and operated by city, county, state. Something, it's a, it's a facility for the public, accessible to the public, and how it gets funded and is operated by. I think those are the key factors here.
Yes, I think that that's, I think adding a second sentence to the, I think you're suggesting adding a second sentence to the definition so that, so that it defines, so it doesn't have to get that detail in the actual item in the code.
So what I have is owned or leased, owned, leased, or funded, owned or leased by the, owned or leased and funded by the, by public sources. Now, do you want that also to say operated by the public? Or could they turn that over to someone to operate it other than themselves?
What about this? "Public" means open to and shared by the citizens of Port Orford for their use, and it is owned, leased, or funded by public sources and operated by either the city, the county, or the state. Something like that?
Yes.
The, okay. Sometimes cities and states turn things over to other people to operate, though. That's the only word that I question is operated by.
In my mind, if the city is directing who is operating it, the city is in control of the, of the facility. And that would be, that would suffice for me.
You could say, and operation, with operations overseen by the city, county, or state, or something.
Ooh, I like.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so Crystal, let me read this again for the commissioners. This is Commissioner Neerat. And make sure we are all okay with this and that I've written it correctly. "Public" means open to and shared by the citizens of Port Orford for their use and is owned, leased, or funded by public sources with operations overseen by the city, the county, or the state. Is that kind of what we're going for?
Yes.
So Shayla, Patty, Crystal, do we need to make a motion to take that definition and put it in the code?
I think, I think as long as we make all the decisions at the end, we can say what we've done. But if you want to do them separately, I suppose it doesn't hurt.
Commissioners, are you happy with just kind of doing everything at the end? Just doing one big motion? Or do we want to do it separately? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Crystal, so we got the, that "public."
Thank you, guys. Good work.
Thank you, Crystal.
Yes, thank you. Is there anything else that we really, that commissioners, is there anything else that we want to look at and tweak? I like the idea of doing structures instead of buildings. Thank you, Crystal. That's, that was great. Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Thielen?
Yes, Commissioner Thielen. I had a couple of points on item D, 17.12050, in the six CD zone. I think there's a Scrivener's error. The number in parentheses is 30. It says 35, but the number is 30. And I'm sure that would be checked in later, but I wanted to just mention.
Say it again, which number it is?
So 17.12.050 in the, in the Control Development Zone 6CD. It says, in the height of building, D height of buildings, it says, no building structure shall exceed 35 feet in height, but the number behind that is 30.
Oh, which one is it?
It should be 35, I believe. Although, please correct me if I'm wrong.
I'll look while you're, while you guys are deciding.
And then, and then, oh. And then on the next item, 17.12.060, Marine Activity Zone, the 7MA, that's where the port is. I believe that the, that the, that the presentation by the port at the last meeting said that they would like to have a 45-foot height on the pier or on the, on the dock. And we passed a 35-foot. And so I wanted to kind of revisit that. I, if you got, if y'all want to do that, and I think there's a way that we can do that. And I had a suggestion earlier, but I didn't have my directions correct. But if we were to say, would it, would it work if we were to say, except as provided in 17.20.050? In 7MA zone, no building structure north of Port Road or east of Oregon Street shall exceed 45, shall exceed 35 feet in height. In the, in the remainder of the zone, 7MA, no structure shall exceed 45 feet in height. feet in height.
Commissioner Thielen, my, this is Commissioner Neera. My recollection is that they just asked for a thirty-five foot exemption. And as a committee, as a commission, we just decided there was no reason why they didn't need thirty-five foot exemption. We could just make everything thirty-five feet, is what I remember. Because I don't remember the, the, the two, that's why we decided that we were just going to do thirty-five feet with no exemption. Go ahead, Patty.
Uh, that is what you decided last time from my notes, that it would, everything on the port would be thirty-five feet, or the seven M A, I'm sure, sorry.
Uh, and, and I, I only say that is because it seemed to me that, that they had asked for a forty-five foot at the port. Is that, is that, is, is that not?
Uh, hold on, Commissioner Byrne.
Commissioner Byrne, they did specify that they would prefer forty-five feet on the dock. And that, I believe, was largely due to the fact that they have redevelopment plans, and they wanted to be sure that the crane, um, did not exceed the height of, that we, uh, were recommending. So, um, yes, I, I agree with Commissioner Thielen that that was something that they had hoped for, was forty-five. Um, but only in the lower area of the marine zone.
Commissioner Reinhold, I saw your hand up.
Uh, well, Pamela covered some of it. Um, it was my understanding as well that we had just done a sweeping thirty-five feet in everything. Um, also with the dock or the marine activity zone, or whatever, I'm sorry, whatever Pamela was just talking about. Um, the cranes are already, have an exemption, so it shouldn't matter what the feet are. But if they want forty-five, then we just amend to give them forty-five right now? As the one.
Well, and I would agree, I'm not into, let's add a bunch in from this dock to, or this road to this road, we're going to do this. I think it becomes way too cumbersome. I think either we do forty-five or we do thirty-five. And I think we did put the exemption, like Commissioner Reinhold said, we did put the exemption in for the high, high-capacity crane. Um, which is what they asked for. But then, you know, they wanted the exemption of thirty-five in the tsunami zone, so if the building fell, or something like that. But they could, I don't remember the forty-five. I don't know, I'm just, I think the less wording we can have, the better it is, is my opinion. Um, and I thought, that's kind of what we had decided, there was no need for an exemption of thirty-five, that we would just make everything a thirty-five, because we had the exemption for the high-capacity crane. Commissioner Thielen?
Yes, and I agree, Commissioner Neera, that it would be simple, and it would be, and, and I, at the moment, at the time, I voted for it because I felt that it was simple and easy, and it would solve all the issues. Uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, Barrett, at, right, right after the meeting, mentioned to me that, that she thought that the, uh, that they were not only asking, this is my, my, what I heard, and what she said may have been different, but what I heard was they not only asked for forty-five feet on the, on the boat lifts, but also uh, for possible, um, higher building heights once their, um, plans were finished. Uh, I guess I should ask Pamela, uh, Commissioner Barrett, right now, if that's, is that, is that true? Is that what, is that what?
That is. You, you're correct. That is what, what I heard during their presentation. Um, and, and so, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I think that one of their main concerns is the, uh, stability of the soil in, in the area that starts to go up the street, up to Fifth Street. And, um, until they really have that determined, um, they don't know exactly what height is stable. Um, so I think they wanted the flexibility there. Um, and, and that's perhaps why they said forty-five feet. Um, I, I think they would be fine. I, I understand you, Commissioner, uh, Neera, that simplifying keeps it easier for everyone to maintain in their head. Um, I think in a situation where we know we have redevelopment plans, and, and we can see that as part of the future, um, we need to, to have some flexibility there. If we can cover this, and this, I guess is a, a question for you, Shayla, with, um, an exemption, then I, I think we can stick with the thirty-five feet and allow for um, movement in the future for the port with their development. I mean, that's what I would suggest.
Sorry, my microphone is off. Commissioner Rossi, sorry.
Yes, I spoke with Tom Calvinies earlier today about this very, uh, subject. And their plans, uh, redevelopment plans at this point for the dock area will probably go over thirty-five feet. And his, uh, feeling, uh, at this point was not to delay the process we're going through any further, but that in fact, when this redevelopment will take place, hopefully in the spring, uh, he would, uh, apply for an exemption to that thirty-five feet in the dock area. So I think if we stuck with the thirty-five feet at this point, that would be fine. Uh, that's my understanding.
Well, the, the problem becomes, what is the criteria for an exemption? I mean, essentially, in land use words, an exemption is a variance, but what they're asking for isn't really, it, it, it doesn't check the boxes for variance. You know, if their plans are already to go over thirty-five feet, and you are willing for them to go over thirty-five feet, I think that you build that into the code now, because we don't have any criteria in place for an exemption.
Understood, thank you.
Go ahead, Crystal. Um, from the very beginning of this, when the council was talking about it, I thought possibly they would want the forty-five feet down in the port zone. And I didn't think it would interfere with anything else, because most of it's down there, except that once you get up on the bank, you probably don't want forty-five foot buildings, because then they are taller than what other people at that level are allowed to have. But one of the problems with the port zone is that there's been a lot of, um, back and forth among the port commissioners themselves. I mean, and even at last meeting, at one time, they said they didn't need forty-five feet. Thirty-five was fine, and the next minute, they said they wanted forty-five feet. So I think you just have to do what you think is right. I agree with Shayla that, um, if, if there's any possibility that they need forty-five feet, it should be built in the code. They can't just change that willy-nilly. It would take them another three months to do that, and it's expensive. And it's expensive for them or the city, one or the other, whoever has to do it. The problem is, the same problem is back to, are you going to have a line where they go to thirty-five feet if you have the forty-five feet, so that, um, you're not going up on the bank by the other people who are at a thirty-five foot lim, level, and then putting stuff in front of them? I don't think it's a major problem, but we should, we would have to re, you know, reword it and say where we want that done, which we have not done in all the meetings we've had and all the times we've talked about it. That's not saying we shouldn't do it. It's just saying we need to get specific and say what it is that we want.
I mean, and, and, Crystal, I appreciate what you said, because yes, they say forty-five, and yes, they say thirty-five, they don't need thirty, forty-five. So in essence, how do we figure out what anybody wants when it keeps changing as well?
I think you have to do what you think will work best for the port. You can't go by individuals saying one thing. They, they obviously don't have a policy for it. So I think you should do what you think is right, and if you think that, and if forty-five feet is right for down on the, down in the bowl, so to speak, and it's not right up at the top, you should say where you want to split it right now.
Do we want to say, I don't know, do we want to say anything on the dock can be forty-five feet, if it's not? I don't know. I mean, at this point, it's kind of, what I heard is they wanted an exception of thirty-five feet. We decided there needed to be no exception, because they just, why, why do the exception? I don't know, I guess.
Do we have a definition of dock? Do we know what constitutes the dock? Or is there going to be questions about that at some point?
Anything not on land, I don't know.
Well, see, that's what starts to concern me.
So, Commissioner Thielen?
I asked that question of, uh, the gentleman making the presentation last week, and he said that there could be building on the property just would be east of the dock. That would be part of that complex. That would, during, during the meeting last week.
If you're going to split it, I think your best choice is still to go up there at, what is the street, Oregon Street or something? And say, you know, East Devon, West Devon.
So that was, that was my suggestion. I've heard you say that earlier this year, that, to, to split it, uh, on Oregon Street. And then I've also heard the port talk about splitting it at the, um, Port Road, which makes sense. So the suggestion I made. That would be, uh, above the Port Road, which would be north of that. So, so the suggestion I made when we just began here was to use both of those criteria, which would make basically a quadrant, a quarter of that quadrant would be forty-five feet. That would be where the dock is, the remainder of it being thirty-five feet.
I don't see Port Road, I see Dock Road.
Dock Road.
The Dock Road goes all the way up to the top.
Dock Road and Fifth. I believe Dock Road and Fifth Street are the coordinates.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we're referring to. So anything south of Fifth Street and Dock Road would be considered on the dock.
Anything east of Fifth Street, oh, excuse me, yeah, uh, east of Oregon Street. So Oregon Street is, is, cuts, cuts down over the hill, it's, it's plotted, it's not, doesn't exist, but if the plot is there, is, it's been surveyed. So east of Oregon Street and north of Dock Road, uh, Dock Road. I said Port Road, didn't I?
Patty knows.
Okay, so why, if you're going to split them, why don't you, instead of this east, west, north, and south thing, why don't you just say anything above Dock Road?
The reason, the reason I.
You're, you're gonna, you're making it really hard on a city planner when you're saying Oregon Street and all this stuff. And, I mean, if you just say anything above Dock Road is thirty-five feet.
Commissioner Thielen?
Yes, the reason I'm suggesting that, Patty, is because there is, there are other lots, um, below Port Road that are, that are east of Oregon Street that could be built on at forty-five feet if it's passed that way.
Go ahead, Crystal.
The other thing is that if these, um, streets are not visible to where the edges are and things like that, whoever's doing this would have to have a survey, and it would have to be a required thing. Because you can't have one person doing it five feet different than somebody else.
Commissioner Reinhold?
Um, as a way to, uh, cover our butts here and try to, trying to make sure, what I assume we're doing is making sure that there isn't like a huge privately-owned building erected there, can we say by use of the port, like forty-five feet by use of the port? No? There's no kind of language that could.
You can't give one, you can't give one group, they're so privileged. I mean, there's a whole bunch of religious stuff like that, too, where a church has in the past been allowed for something, and then other people can't do it, and then it's like, no.
Is there any other discussion specifically on? Is it seven M A we're talking, Zone seven M A, am I correct? Commissioner Thielen?
I guess the, the only, the last thing I'd like to say is if, if, uh, if the port really wanted to have it be at forty-five feet, and we, at last month, passed it at thirty-five feet, and they're not here speaking today, then maybe thirty-five feet should stand.
Well, they'll probably show up when you have your hearing.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
Then would we be having this discussion again, then?
Yeah.
At least we would be well-versed in the, in the issues.
So my question to you, Shayla and Crystal, if they show up to the hearing and don't like thirty feet, and they want the forty-five, do we, can we go back through it again, and then do we have to have another hearing?
No.
No.
Okay. I propose we stay with thirty-five.
Commissioner Reinhold?
Um, if I'm understanding correctly, and, you know, bear with me, um, it looks like there's quite a few typos on here where it says thirty feet, and shouldn't they all say thirty-five?
Actually, that, I would like to say that that, um, controlled development zone is thirty feet. The council did that.
Okay. Okay. The six C D should be thirty feet.
Oh.
So my mistake was in not changing thirty-five, or in changing.
Yeah.
Um, but how about in the residential zones, where it says thirty feet?
That's how the council did it.
Mm-hmm. We were, we were only supposed to look at, if I remember correctly, the four C and the five I, we had previously said thirty in the residentials, and they had.
I just put those in there so you would see the whole picture.
I'm on board.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion, um, or comments? Commissioner Byrne?
Yes, um, I, my feeling is if we know what the port's, um, desire is, um, that they know that there's very likely going to be some, a structure in the plans that will exceed thirty-five, why don't we try to figure this out today? And, um, if it's clear, um, according to what Patty offered, that if we say above Dock Road is thirty-five, below Dock Road is forty-five in the, um, seven M A zone, um, I'd be fine with that. And, and I feel like we are then providing the port their freedom to build down on the, the dock, which is all that they're asking for.
Any other comments? Commissioner Thielen?
Yes, uh, thank you. And I, and I'll say it again, that there is property that is not controlled by the dock, that is, that is, uh, when you first turn down, when you first, uh, pull onto Dock Road, the, the property directly below is, I believe, is private property there. So that would then put a, a forty-five foot, uh, limit on that property also.
Well, they have that now.
What if we specified the lower portion or of Dock Road? What if we specified the lower portion or of Dock Road? Because Dock Road really does a curve, a sharp turn. And it's really between Fifth Street and Dock Road is the upper section. Okay, so it's, I know it's hard to nail it down specifically, but if we use the street as the dividing point and we say the lower section of Dock Road, perhaps that would work.
So.
Patty, you have a question?
Go ahead Patty.
I've got a question for Shayla and Crystal. If we can't say the port, why are we, why are we allowing a group, which is the dock, the port, a higher building height than anybody else?
I would agree, because even though you're not saying the port, we're ultimately building like a 45 foot for the port and everybody else is 35.
Exactly, and if
That's how I feel.
Nobody else can build 45 feet. And I've been asked this question many times, why is this group getting more preference than I am in the zone? You know, I mean, I, I need to know how to answer these questions, okay? Why should the port need a four-story building at 45 feet? When I can only have one two-story at 30 feet or 35?
Commissioner Schofield.
These are valid questions.
I saw Commissioner Schofield's hand up. Do you have a question or a comment?
Well, I, I just kind of have a comment and like, this really isn't my battle one way or the other, but I did serve on Port Commission several years ago. And like, I'm under the opinion that this project is never going to come to fruition. However, with that being said, I mean, this has been in the works for like 12 years. And they've, you know, they've, they've spent a ton of, of grant money and, you know, drawing up these different options of plans. And, and I think that, you know, whatever they decide on or i- if it happens or, you know, if, and, and I'm pretty sure like when I was on Port Commission that the 35 feet was not going, um, it was going to go over 35 feet. And so like to just, I, I don't know, to, to change that on them, I mean, if that's what this commission wants to do, that's fine. But at the end of the day, you know, then that's going to end up, you know, creating a, a financial burden for them to have to go back and redo all these plans. Or it's going to come, you know, to the commission again to, to change the requirements. So, you know, I'm just kind of throwing that out there as, you know, someone that was on that commission, um, through all that time when we were, you know, having, um, work groups and meeting with, you know, planners and engineers and architects and, you know, but like I said, I don't know where the port is actually in the process. You know, I've heard rumors that they, they don't have all the money and then I hear there's rumors there are. So I don't, I don't know where they're at in the process, but I think it's kind of, um, not a good thing to just, you know, kind of derail what they have going. It's my opinion.
Commissioner Reinhold, thank you, Commissioner Schofield.
I would agree with that. And I would say that the reason that, um, they would get an exemption and others might not is because that's what the city wants. I think I speak for most people, in fact, in the community. I think they would happily support that. The direction we want the city to go in, that's type of like tourism and like this supports so many jobs in this community, like that, that is the town. The dock is.
Go ahead Shayla.
So, I mean, I guess what is the concern between 35 versus 45 feet? What I'm hearing is that you want the port to be able to build the structures that they have planned, which exceed 35 feet. So what is the issue of making the entire zone 45 feet? Right, what, what is the concern? Because a 35 foot building is going to block the same view line that a 40 foot, you know, building does. So what, what is the concern and why can it not be a 45 foot zone? Just in general.
And that's what I'm wondering, because I know they wanted the exception for the 35 feet because they said, um, something about tsunami evacuation piece. But I'm, I'm starting to tend to agree. I mean, we're talking about the marine activity zone and we're like, the port wants 45 except in here. Okay, well then we might as well just put, the port gets 45 and everybody else gets 35. But then Crystal says, you know, you can't show favoritism to one or. Go ahead, Crystal, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, I said can't, you can't name different uses, but you are entitled to
Okay.
Give specific rights to an industrial zone that you don't give to a residential zone. This is your industrial port zone. You would be expected to try to accommodate whatever economic development they're doing in that zone. You just can't say, the port can do something different in that zone than other people can do.
So here's my question then. Yeah, so here's my question then, if we're saying that there is privately held lots above Dock Road. And I'm correct on that, correct?
Yes.
But we're saying they can't build above 35. Isn't the implication like Patty was saying, she's getting questions on, well, why can they build 45 and I can only build 35? I mean, Patty, that's kind of where you were going. Am I correct on that? Crystal?
I guess I understood that there was a difference in elevation at some point as you went up the, up the hill. And if you can't describe that difference in elevation by a road or something, it's really pretty hard to do it.
Do we have any other discussions? So Commissioners, my question to you would be, do we want to do a change from 35 to 45? Just across the board? Do we want to discuss?
No.
Pardon?
It's not a change. They have 45 feet right now.
Okay, so then do we want to keep it? And thank you for letting me know. Do we want to keep it at 45 feet with no exemption to the 35? Commissioner Reinhold?
Just to hear it out loud, we are just talking about the marine activity zone, right?
Yes. Am I correct on that, Crystal? Patty and Shayla, okay, we're only talking about 7MA. So we would leave it currently at 45 feet and the exemption to go higher than that would only be for, at this point, would only be for the high capacity. Do we want to Commissioners, Commissioner Thielin, you're probably going to answer my question. Go ahead.
I hope I do. I like our change to 35. And I think I'm, I am still in favor of basically making a cross and having that quadrant where the port is be 45 and the remainder of it be 35. If we don't do that, I, I would be in favor of leaving it at 35 and seeing what happens, seeing if the port, seeing how the port brings information to us after the, um, public here, at public hearing. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, then I guess to me the question would be, do we do a 45 and then use your quadrant and say everything in the other three quadrants have to be a 35 or do we have a quadrant with a 35 and say the port? Then I think like Crystal said, you do, then if, if somebody wanted to do a 45 and they were in whatever, they would have to get a surveyor to make sure which parts that they are, um, part that they're in.
The, 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 the lots are already plotted. I mean, you, you would have to know where the, where your lot line was to do a setback in any case. I mean, you can't just build without knowing where your lot lines are.
Go ahead, Commissioner Byrne.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Thielin. I think that's a solid, um, approach for this because we've heard a variety of, of, uh, testimony. And we've seen the court's presentation. I think that it's the best solution that we can come up with. Using the 35 in the upper quadrants and 45 in the lower.
I don't quite understand how to state quadrants.
Well, so if I, if I may say, so it would be as, as I said, north of Dock Road. So any, any, uh, the area north of Dock Road or east of Oregon Street would be, uh, 35 feet. The area south of Dock Road and west of Oregon Street would be 45 feet. And that would accommodate the needs of the port, which is pretty important to me.
Go ahead, Crystal.
I have a question for Greg. So you're saying north of Dock Road and?
Areas north of Dock Road or east of Oregon Street.
Why don't we just say one?
One?
One of those two. I mean, what's the difference?
The difference is that there's an area, there is an area that is south of Dock Road and east of Oregon Street that is that beach that people go to. And it's a, it's a beautiful place and I would hate to see a 45 foot structure on it.
I don't, I, then I don't understand where we're talking about. I'm looking at the map here and I still don't understand. I'm slow with this.
So, uh, Oregon Street goes, goes north and south, correct? And Dock Road essentially goes east and west, although it curves and goes up. So an area south of Dock Road and west of Oregon Street could be 45 feet. It would be simple to just say that. Actually, it could, i- i- if, if we just said that, that's the simple way to say it. So the area nor, uh, the area south of Dock Road and west of Oregon Street are 40, is 45 feet. The remainder is 35. That's the simple way to say it.
So one more question, I'm looking at the map. What is the difference between north of Dock Road and south? I mean, north of Dock Road? What, what's the difference between Oregon Street and Dock Road when they, where they intersect?
So they, where they intersect, that, that lower section to the left is where the port is. And that's the, that's where the port is. That's where we want to have 45 feet.
I understand where the port is. I don't understand why we need to name two streets when they come together at the same place.
Well, they, they intersect, correct?
Yeah.
So the area that is, that lies east of Oregon Street and south of Dock Road is now 45 feet. It would change to be 35 feet.
You want to write it up and send it to me if that's what these guys want?
So. Okay. I can send, I'll just write it really fast here.
If that's what, if that's what people agree on.
I mean, it, do we understand the concept?
When I'm looking at the map and following what you're saying, it's not making sense to me.
Is, is the port on your, when you're, as you look at your map, is the port west of Oregon Street?
No.
Well, yeah. I mean, part of it is.
Yeah.
And so maybe, maybe part of the confusion is that Oregon Street does not really connect with Dock Road. Fifth Street connects to Oregon Street. Harbor Drive is, is basically Dock Road.
Okay, and that's not even on my map, so.
Oh, but the, on, on, the Oregon Street is plotted all the way to the ocean. I've seen a map of it plotted all the way to the ocean.
Crystal, can you see this?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. Well.
Okay, well, I can't tell where I've got it. Okay, see where my yellow line is?
Yeah.
Okay, he's, anything above that yellow line. And to the, uh, east of it is what he's talking about.
We should just plot it on a map and adopt it.
Oh, yeah. Just give the coordinates.
Is that what, what you're talking about, Greg? What I've got on here?
Yes, or it, it doesn't, I, I can't see it on the map. I, I'm sorry, I don't have the map in front of me, but it, you see it, a line, an extension of Oregon Street all the way to the ocean?
I was going, it's going all the way to the Dock Road.
It, it stops at the Dock Road?
Yes. Well, I, that's where I stopped it.
Yeah, oh, I'm not an engineer, but that line is the line we want. Whether it's a, whether it's a coordinate or an extension, whether we call it an extension of, uh, uh, Oregon Street. I mean.
Then I think we should just adopt it into the ordinance with a map so that it's not unclear.
I do see the map and it's not, Oregon Street is not an extension, but there's like a, a line that continues to the ocean.
Okay, that line, whatever that line is, it would seem to make that really, that it would be really simple. If that line was the north-south boundary of the 45 foot zone. And then the Port Road was the other boundary.
So hold on, let me see if I can, I know, I can't share it. But there's, I see Dock Road. And then there's a line that cuts it and to the west, there is like plot number 200 is what I'm seeing. Patty, it's the map that you showed.
I think a tax lot map might be the best.
Yeah. So ultimately Greg, and I can't share my screen, but this came from the, the June planning packet.
Yes.
Ultimately, what we're saying is, is we want to take Oregon Street and just extend it straight down to the water. Even though there's not necessarily a street.
Yes.
We're going to extend it straight down to the water. And, oh, I wish, I wish I could share my screen. I think it'd be easier for everybody.
I actually have, I have the map in the other room. I'm going to go get it. Be right there.
Because it does break it into quadrants. But then it doesn't really continually go to the dock, so I'm not sure what happens after that. But Patty, you were correct on that map that you had. Go ahead, Crystal.
So, could this be put on a tax lot map? Just one of the black and white tax lot maps? And adopt it right into the ordinance?
Hello, what do you think?
You're muted.
I think a map would be helpful.
I had no idea what you all were talking about until I brought the map. Do you have it, Commissioner Thielen?
I'm looking through my maps.
Because when you're standing there, north, southeast, and west are unfortunately not obvious. And I, I'm from here, so I still, I.
If I may, I have access to a mapping application through my work. If I could plot this and send it out to everyone, it might just be easier to visualize this. If, if that's okay, if we could just defer this for a day, and then I can send it out.
I think, though, if we defer for a day, we have to go to the next meeting to make sure that we have it, which would give us another thirty. So, we wouldn't even be looking at a public hearing until November, am I correct? Go ahead, Crystal.
I think that we could have a map at the public hearing. And if we disagree with it at the public hearing, or somebody disagrees with it, we can change it. You know, everything can't be perfect for the public hearing. A lot of times, there's loose ends. And I don't think you should have to go to November. If one of our members can make a map and send it to the staff, and we can incorporate it, and you have another chance. And the public has a chance.
Okay. Commissioner Thielen, do you have that map? You want to kind of show the thought process?
Patty, I believe this is the map you were showing me. And it shows, it shows the Oregon Street, and then it has the line, it just continues right to the ocean. And that was what I had in my mind when I was speaking of it as a plot of the, of the, of the road. But yes, I think that would be fairly simple. I mean, the idea is simple, once we see the map. And the directions, Oregon Street does run north and south. That's, that is, that's the north-south direction.
Commissioner Reinhold?
So, Commissioner Thielen, what you're talking about, and I feel like I was hearing it wrong, is west of Oregon Street and south of Dock Road, right?
West of Oregon Street and, correct.
Okay.
When I first said it, I was stating the other part, but really, the part we really should focus on is the forty-five foot. And that's the simple way to say it.
In, okay, in that zone. All right. I hope we can find a way to say that now.
So, Commissioner Burnt, do you do, could you make a map and send it? I don't know if it would be appropriate to send it to the individual or to have Patty send it to us, so we're prepared for the next meeting, and then we would put it in in the packet for the public hearing? Is that correct, how we should do it, Sheila and Crystal? Okay. So, Commissioner Burnt, if you would do that.
Okay.
And then I'll make sure it gets in the next one. Okay, so. I think if Commissioner, one of the commissioners, or Crystal, or Sheila, if you want to read how you think seventeen-point-one-two-point-zero-six-zero marine activity zone, which would be seven MA, you think it should be read? Or written to be read? Would somebody like to come up with that?
Well, I would just have it say. Where did it go? No structures shall exceed thirty-five feet in height, except that defined location may reach forty-five feet, or something like that. However you define that, exception area.
South of, south of Port Road and west of the, what do you call it, the meridian of Oregon Street?
Right, and then you, I would refer to the map and adopt the map.
Mm-hmm, I would too. So, we could say, as shown on map, as.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, do we have, so, let me read it, see if this is the gist of what we're going for. Height, so this is for the marine activity zone, seven MA. Except as provided in section seventeen-point-two-zero-point-zero-five-zero in a seven MA zone. No structures shall exceed thirty-five feet in height, except structures, except structures, as shown in map, may reach forty-five, or something like that. Map A, or whatever you want to say.
Correct.
Okay, something like that. Are we okay with that, commissioners? Are we all right with that type of wording, and we'll clean it up for the public hearing?
Yes, right.
Okay. Anything else?
If we're moving on.
Just one, one more question.
Yes, Crystal.
So, Pamela, Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
You're going to use the assessors' tax lot map, is that correct?
Well, I was going to use a, no, I was not, although I can include the tax lots in this plotting application that we have.
It needs, it needs to be an assessor's map.
Okay.
Well, that's what we use for everything, to define property within the cities.
Okay. All right, I will include the tax lots. I can turn on all of these different features in order to do this. So, whatever we need on there.
And I think even, even the planer, the better, you know?
Okay.
Even just the tax lot map that has no aerial or anything, it's just showing where those lines are is probably the best.
Streets and tax lot, basically, is what you want.
Right.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Any other discussion about what is before us in the municipal code, chapter seventeen-point-oh-four? Okay, so, I think we have two changes that we need to vote on, or the whole thing we need to vote on. Am I correct on that? So, how would I make that, what would that motion sound like? Sheila, Patty, Crystal, anybody?
You would make a motion to hold a public hearing on the ordinance as presented with your two exceptions, and set out what your exceptions are.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we do it on both exceptions? Like, make that motion, okay? So, do I have a motion for what Sheila just said?
I should have recorded it.
I know.
I'll, I'll attempt this. I would like to make a motion that we proceed to a public hearing step with the exceptions that we've made today on. Do I need to specify those, Sheila? The exceptions? So, the.
First, you might want to say utilizing the information provided in the staff report with two exceptions.
Okay. So, utilizing the information and findings from the staff report. There are two exceptions, and we would like to reword those. One has to do with the term "public." We want to add to that owned, leased, funded by public sources, and overseen by city, county, or state. And the second alteration is in the marine activity zone, the seven MA. We want to keep the thirty-five feet with the exception of structures in an area indicated on the included map.
Did we cover everything, Sheila and Crystal? Would that motion do okay? Okay. Good job, Commissioner Burnt. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Rossi, I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Thielen?
Commissioner Thielen, yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt? Yes. Commissioner Reinhold?
Yes.
Commissioner Schofield?
Yes.
Commissioner Neerad, is a yes motion carried? Okay. So, we are now on to other business.
One thing, Chair.
Yes.
Staff report as amended because of the mistake.
The motion has carried with the staff report as amended. Correct? Okay, perfect. Thank you. City planner comments? Do we have any comments?
No. I think I did, but I can't think of them now.
Okay, well, we'll move on. If you have any comments, we'll jump back in. Okay, Planning Commission comments, Commissioner Burnt?
Yes, I wanted to, under the proposed findings as the basis of the Planning Commission's legislative decision, I think it's a really good idea that in three-B, the statewide planning goal, nine economic development, we include the looking-to-the-future piece that was developed in 2016, I believe. That was the suggestion by Planning Commissioner, Planner, City Planner, Soji. And I think it definitely helps to clarify what the goals and the vision for this city are about.
So, Crystal, will you just, do we, can she just add that? Can you just add that?
Yes, that will be, that'll be C, and it'll be looking to the future. And I'll find in there something specific, or if not, just the whole reference that it talks about human scale and sense of place.
Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Burnt. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other Planning Commission comments? Okay, so, here's my question, I guess, for Patty, Sheila, and Crystal. We have to have a thirty-five-day notice, am I correct? For a public hearing? That's what we're suggesting. Okay. So, thirty days would put it at October seventh, am I correct? Twenty-eight would be the fifth.
And the twelfth is our next meeting?
The fifth would actually be our next meeting, because it's the first Tuesday.
That's right, so we don't have thirty-five days.
We wouldn't have thirty-five days.
And, and, okay, you can't count thirty-five days from tomorrow, because this has to be written up first and ready to be sent out, so you've got to give it some time.
So, when, when, when can we start the thirty-five day? I'm just wondering. This is, I understand that we have to give you time. I'm just wondering, when would we, where would the thirty-five day then be, something like the week of the eighteenth?
The week of what?
Which we'd run into the, the week of October eighteenth, which then I believe we would run into county, or city council meeting, would be that week.
Yeah, the city council meeting is the sixteenth. Oh, no, wait, no.
Of October.
October would be the twenty-first.
So, question to, I guess I'm throwing this out to Patty, Crystal, and Sheila. If we were to move, I, and I don't even know how, like, if we could get it here. I'm thinking like, something like October nineteenth, we could hold the public hearing. My question to you, Patty, then, is that enough time to give it to the council, or? Okay, that's where I'm asking.
Because the council packets are already out by then? You know, no. Because the council packets have to be out the prior week.
Okay. So, my question. Okay, so my question then to everybody is, the thirty-five days would be somewhere, if Patty, thirty-five days would be something like, if Patty were to get it out by Thursday?
It's not just, it's not that.
Okay, well, no, this is why I'm asking, because I don't know the process, and I don't know the time. No, I know, this is why I'm asking, because my thought process is, is this would just come out tomorrow. This is why I'm asking.
Done by Crystal, and it has to go to DLCD.
And to all the public.
And to the seven, or the thirteen-hundred people that own property here, whatever. I mean, I've got the list already made on that, but.
We don't have a notice. We need the.
And this is why I'm asking. So, then, the public hearing wouldn't be able to be held then, at least until our November meeting.
I think that would be best.
Okay. This is why I'm asking, because I don't know how this, how the government entities work and what you have to do, blah, blah, blah. And that's why I'm asking. Well, I'm trying to nail down the date, so the commission knows.
If it was held on the November second meeting, and if it wasn't held over, you know, our part of the public hearing, it could make it to council by the November eighteenth meeting.
Okay.
Because they have to have a public hearing also.
Okay. Commissioner Burnt?
Is there any way to alter the thirty-five-day notice, or is that set in stone?
It's not just the notice. We have to prepare the notice. We have to prepare the document into an ordinance format. We have to prepare a notice for the public, which is a twenty-to-forty-day notice. And we have to report to LCDC, so it's a, it's a process. The notice time is just one of the elements.
Well, and I think as novices on the commission, this is why we're asking the question, because you said LCDC, and I don't even know who LCDC is. So, this is why I'm clarifying. I was at thirty-five days from today. That's why I was, we were asking.
If Patty would just work all night, and.
Come on, Patty.
Yeah, well, it's not going to happen.
Okay.
Then we have other things going on, you know, tomorrow, and things we're supposed to be doing too, so.
Okay, so, the public hearing then will be more than likely November second. Okay. Commissioners, are we okay with that time? I mean, we have to kind of be okay with that timeline. That's, that's kind of when that notice would go. So, for the October meeting, Crystal and Patty and Sheila, then what would be the conversation?
Nothing.
Oh, okay, well, I just wondered.
It won't be this.
Okay, okay.
We don't want to start the timeline all over again.
Okay, so Commissioners, November second looks like is where we'll be for the public hearing on building heights. Are there any other comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Thielen.
Sorry. I'd just like to comment that it looks like the city council is, is thinking about affordable housing for our community and ADUs and various, various things. I think that's something we're, that we probably should be, start thinking about. I think they're going to be handing that off. I think they're going to be handing that off to us to do some work. So, I'm going to be myself, just thinking about it, and, uh, talking to people, and maybe doing some research myself.
Go ahead, Crystal.
Can I go, can I do my planner's comments now, Greg made me think of it?
Perfect, way to go, Greg.
I'm concerned about, um, vacation rentals, and I do want to tell you what's happening up here, and I imagine it's happening in Port Orford, maybe, and you don't even know it yet. But, um, the city of Coos Bay allowed vacation rentals at one point. Now, before, they weren't necessarily disallowed, but they weren't spelled out. And that's the way Port Orford is right now, I believe. And, um, we started having a rush on them. Some neighborhoods, like mine, got two on my little street that's only a block and a half long already. And another neighborhood has had quite a flurry. And, um, we got the city to put a moratorium on that. And low and behold, within a week of that moratorium, at my house, I got a come-on letter from a place in Portland, um, encouraging me to change my rental to, the rental which is right next to my house, to a vacation rental, and quite an explanation of how much more money I could be making by having a vacation rental, which is exactly what we thought was happening, but we didn't know this was being instigated, instigated by outside people, and that the realtors are selling places as vacation rentals. So, my assumption at this time is that, um, before the moratorium even got into place, these letters were in the works, and that two other property, properties that are on our street that are rentals right now probably got those letters, and one's for sale right now. So, without the city's moratorium, that likely would have become a great big vacation rental. And, um, this is concerning to me for Port Orford also, because at some point, you may, some point before long, you may notice this is happening, or it may already be happening, and you may not have seen the letters coming to people. But it's really an encouragement to get rid of housing, and to, um, it's also, it's also much better. I could make $36,000, I mean, I mean, this is what the letter says. I could make $36,000 a year instead of 12 by switching. Now, I don't believe that totally, but it sounds pretty lucrative, and it sounds like, well, this is a good deal. So, um, I wanted to bring it up, I think you guys might want to be thinking about this. I know it's happening up and down the coast, but it's also happening on the south coast now. And I, I don't think that you want to wait too long. If you think it's important, you should start feeling out people where you see something converting, and finding out how that happened, or talking to your realtors, or talking to your city council, so that you can determine if this is something that you would like to take on.
Commissioner Burnt?
Um, last week, I attended the special meeting of the city council, um, to pass two resolutions for a state of emergency, and essentially a 60-day moratorium on, um, various water use. Um, so, uh, in, in discussing what's coming down the road, and what we should be thinking about, I think water is, is a huge one, um, that somehow needs to enter into our conversations at some point. Um, there is a, uh, there are no new hookups for 60 days right now, um, which will obviously affect, uh, new construction and, and building in this town. Um, so, I just thought I'd bring that up in case no one else knew about that. I know a letter went out to every homeowner. That's all.
Thank you. Any other planning commission comments? Any, any public consider, or I'm sorry, any continuing business? Any public considerations? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Thielen, motion to adjourn, or I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you all very much, this meeting is now adjourned. We'll see you all in October.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Thank you.